We will call the meeting to an end. We will begin with the standard.
The pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom to guide our thoughts and decisions that may bring fairness and unity in progress to those that were here served. Let you bless each person gathered here and may that we continue to focus on unity and strength and act with integrity. May all we do represent you. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll proceed with the roll call for this evening's meeting. Stephen Pumphrey. Brandon Bias here. Robert Davis.
Here.
Scott Shamberger.
Here.
Michael Mullet.
Here.
Greg Seibert.
Here.
Jamie Stradiger.
Here.
Michael Fletcher.
Here.
George Waters.
Here.
Reekey.
Here.
We have a quorum for this evening's meeting. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from September 4th, both the work session and the regular meeting. A copy has been provided and we will entertain a motion when everybody's ready.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up on the agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that have been grouped together based upon the feedback we have received for consent agenda to take them at one time. I'm going to call these agenda items out individually. The first two do not have a public hearing, the remainder three do. So if you wish to speak on any of the subdivision extensions, please raise your hand and let us know and we can pull that off consent agenda. But this evening's consent agenda includes HCA 2502 Keen Property Highway Construction setback appeal, HCA 2504 Big Fish Ministries Highway Construction setback appeal, PER 25-39 Sherwood Grove Extension, PER 25-41 Pleasance Oak Extension, and PER 25-42 Emerald Coast RV Park Extension. Are there any of those, the last three of the extensions, that anyone wishes to speak on? All right, well, I will open the public hearing for PER 25-39, PER 25-41, PER-42. And then we will subsequently close the public hearing on those. And we will take action on the consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion. And Brenda, for the record, note that I will not vote on any cases this evening unless I need it for a time record. So we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I heard Jamie beat you.
That's fine.
Jamie with the motion. Robert with the second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda? All opposed? All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Our first new business case is PUD 25-10 Old Plash Road PUD. I will open the public hearing on that and ask if staff has, or if the commission has had any previous communications on this case. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This case was prepared by Mary Booth and I will be presenting it on her behalf. As you mentioned, this is for PUD 2510 Old Plash Island Road. This is a planned unit development for storage units. This is located in Planning District 27. The total area of the property is approximately 4.9 acres and the applicant is proposing nine-unit planned unit development. The site currently has four units that are existing and the applicant is proposing five additional units. Here is your site map. I've corrected the location from your staff report there so you can see the correct location. And here is your locator map. Here is your site plan reflecting the existing and proposed storage units. Here you can see your proposed buildings highlighted in red and your grading and drainage plan. The applicant is also proposing some new storm water management improvements. Your landscaping plan, our subdivision regulations require that a 10-foot wide buffer is planted around the perimeter of the parcel as well as along any storm water management areas. Staff, our department has received public comments with concerns regarding this project, so I just wanted to highlight those comments here. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the comments. And staff is recommending approval with the following conditions that are allowed in their staff reports. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff on this case? I have three people that are signed up for it, all in support. Two are listed as the owner and one is the agent. Any of y'all wish to come speak? Anyone else here wish to speak on this case? All right, well, then we will close the public hearing. Anything else to add, Ms. Waters?
No. Regarding one of the conditions on the floor plans for the build-outs of the storage units, the applicant did tell me that they uploaded some of that documentation to the portal and staff just hasn't had time to review it. But it appears that that condition may be already addressed, but we've just not had the time to look over the plans yet.
Okay. Can you go back to those conditions?
Yes. And there actually should be a condition here, my apologies, that reflects that usable open space shall be applied to the site plan and that the applicant provides a revised site plan. I will add this condition here for the record. There we go.
Any questions for staff? All right, we'll entertain a motion if anybody is ready.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve case number PUD 25-10, subject to staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Seconded.
And we have a second for Mr. Seibert. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, this case has been approved. The next case is SC 25-42 Graves Estates. Has anyone had any, ask the commission if anyone's had outside communication on this case. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing as well.
Good afternoon. This is for SC 2542 Grave Estate Subdivision. This is for preliminary plat approval for the replat of Lot 7A of Oak River View Subdivision First Edition. We're recommending approval with conditions. So Planning District 27 is unzoned. The subject property is west of State Highway 59 located directly off of County Road 8 in the Gulf Shores Community area. We're requesting the two lots. Preliminary plat approval for the replat of Lot 7A of Oak River View Subdivision First Edition. Total acreage is 3.5. The smallest lot will be 1.08 acres. There's no wetland noted. Drainage report was provided. Location, Planning District 27. This is the subject property. This is the recorded plat of Lot 7, re-subdivision of the Oak River View Subdivision First Edition. Here's the proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2. It's enlarged to show detail. Again, the subject property is west of State Highway 59 located directly off of County Road 8 in the Gulf Shores Community area. A re-subdivision of Lot 7 of the First Edition of Oak River View Subdivision was approved in 2002, creating two 3.55-acre parcels, 7A and 7B. The proposed two residential lots, Lot 1, 1.08 acres, and Lot 2, 2.46 acres, re-subdivision of Lot 7A will be accessed from County Road 8. Staff recommends that the preliminary plat approval for the replat of Lot 7A of Oak River View Subdivision be approved with conditions subject to compliance with the Ballin County subdivision regulations. In any future development of the subject property, we'll adhere to the Ballin County Access Management Plan and procedures. Any questions?
Questions for staff? All right, I don't have anyone noted as being signed up for this case. Get you to come up to the mic, please, since we're recording the meeting.
Yeah, hey, I'm Katie Palmer. I'm with Woodlands Group. And this was supposed to be preliminary and final plat approval in one. It's not supposed to be just preliminary.
This is, you're going to circulate it for signatures out of this, yes.
I apologize. That's a, thank you.
Good, okay. Glad we got that clarified. Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing. Any additional questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case number SC 25-42, subject to staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, this case has been approved. Next case is SPP 24-24 BFLC Estates at Beetree Creek. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone on the commission's had outside communication on this case. Ms. Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is for case SPP 2424, the BFLC Estates at Beetree Creek. This is a preliminary plat application for a 112 large acre subdivision. Here is your planning district map. The subject property is located on Planning District 13. It is unzoned. The number of proposed lots is 112 and they are a large acre subdivision, meaning that all the lots are 20 acres and greater. The public utilities will be reflected are wells and septic tanks. A traffic study was conducted by Shane Bergen with New Schaefer and it was reviewed and accepted by the planning and zoning permit engineer. Traffic improvements were warranted as a northbound right turn lane at the intersection of County Road 64 and Lynn Home Road. A wetland report prepared by Louis Cassidy with EcoSolutions for the wetland impacts have been submitted for staff to review. In all the wetland areas, the applicant has chosen to apply the 50-foot wetland natural buffer setback per the Baldwin County Wetland Generalized Map. The total site consists of approximately 2,700 acres that is currently being utilized as a log timber operation. The applicant is proposing to divide the property through the large acre subdivision and a wetland fill permit application has been submitted to the U.S. Corps of Engineers for the proposed 14 wetland crossings through the jurisdictional wetlands that are proposed. The total acreage of impacts is approximately eight acres. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. The applicant shall install a northbound right turn lane at the intersection of Lynn Home Road and County Road 64, provide staff a copy of the permit approval prior to applying for final plat application, and the applicant shall also install a major residential driveways where two or more lots will be accessed by the same egress, egress easement. Shared driveways must be permitted and installed by the applicant prior to submitting an application for final plat approval. And there is a revision of the stream setback on the data table to reflect a 30-foot natural buffer from the top of the bank on both sides. Here is your vicinity map. Here is your plat that has been rotated and extended. All of the red outlining represents where the proposed wetland crossings will be. And here is your traffic improvements reflecting the northbound right turn lane between County Road 64 and Lynn Home Road. Here are the environmental impacts, also reflecting all of those, the 14 wetland crosses referenced. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? I do not have anybody signed up for this case. If there's anybody who wishes to come speak on this case. All right, we will close the public hearing then. Questions? Entertain a motion if anybody would like to make one.
I make a motion that we approve case number SPP 24-24, subject to staff conditions.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Seconded.
We have a second. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This case has been approved. Next case is SPP 25-05 and SV 25-06. I will open the public hearing for these cases as well as ask if staff, if anyone on the commission has outside communication. All right, Ms. Waters?
All right, this is case, as you mentioned, SPP 2505 and SV 2506, wetlands placed. This is preliminary plat approval for a 17-lot residential subdivision and a subdivision variance request to create a remnant parcel. Here is your planning district map. The subject property is located in Planning District 13. It is unzoned. The property is located east of Cowpen Creek Road. And as I mentioned, they are proposing to create 17 lots where the smallest lot size is approximately 40,000 square feet. The utilities available are East Central Baldwin for water, Baldwin EMC for power, and septic tanks are proposed for sewer. No roadway infrastructure such as common driveways were warranted at this time. Potential wetlands were identified on the subject property and the applicant has shown the 50-foot natural buffer as required by our regulations. The applicant has submitted a request for a subdivision variance from Section 8.1.1 for remnant parcels to exclude approximately 176 acres from the proposed subdivision. Staff's recommending approval with the following conditions: approval of the subdivision variance, all driveways must comply with the local road requirements outlined by the access management policy, the applicant shall apply for a final plat application that will be revealed by staff administratively. Here is your vicinity map and a copy of your plat with the remnant parcel, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, I keep getting hung up on the remnant property, so it's not part of the subdivision. It's just cut away from it.
That's correct. That's right. It is not going to be numbered like a lot of the subdivision. It will remain like a meets and bounds parcel if you approve the variance.
Any other questions? I see that nobody has signed up to speak on this case. Is there anyone here that wishes to? With that, we will close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments, or discussions on this case? Jay, do we need to take these two cases separately on a vote or take them together?
Yes, you first you vote on the variance and then on the preliminary plat.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion on the variance if anybody wishes to make one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve variance SV 25-06.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor of approving SV 25-06 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, then we can entertain a motion on SPP 25-05.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve case SPP 25-05, subject to staff conditions.
We have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving SP 25-05 say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, both of those are taken, approved. Next case is SRP 25-14 Woodpecker Landing. I'll open the public hearing on this one and ask if anyone on the commission's had outside communication on this case. Ms. Waters, you got all the cases tonight, didn't you?
This is my last one. All right, as you mentioned, this is for case SRP 2514 Woodpecker Landing. The request here is to relocate the lot line between two existing lots of record located within two different subdivisions. The subject property is located in Planning District 12. One parcel is owned RSF1 while the remnant parcel of the southern parcel is split zoning between RA and also RSF1. The subject property is located south of County Road 54 and north of Woodpecker Road. The request in front of you is to relocate the property line adjoining both parcels that are existing of two separate subdivisions. A little background here, the applicant, the proposed Lot 2 is part of Highway 54 acre subdivision while Lot 1 is part of the existing Bowden plantation. An updated wetland delineation has been provided by the applicant reflecting a revised wetland boundary from the approved PRD and preliminary plat. For the Lot 2, staff has reviewed the updated delineation report and has no objections to the revisions. And a little bit background, in 2024, a PRD and a preliminary plat approval for Woodpecker Landing subdivision was approved for a 15-lot subdivision. And it is staff's understanding that the applicant no longer intends to pursue that approval of the subdivision and instead he is just pursuing the relocation of the lot lines between the two existing parcels. In approval, should the planning commission choose to approve this request, this would null and void the original PRD site plan preliminary plat approval because it would be ultimately altering the originally approved open space areas, drainage improvement areas for part of that original subdivision. Staff's recommending approval with the following condition, that the applicant shall submit an application and obtain approval for an exemption for the common movement of property line between the two parcels and provide a replat for signatures. And also remove the signature blocks referencing 911, the water, sewer, and electrical services. Here is your zoning map, your vicinity map, and the proposed lot line movement between the two parcels. And here is the approved PRD preliminary plat that was approved. And here is the approved PRD preliminary plat that was approved last year. That's all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for staff? All right, I have two people signed up. Randy Ark, anything you want to add? Shannon Higginbottom? Okay. Anyone else here wish to speak on this case? Yes, sir, please come up and give us your name.
My name's Eric Naquin. I received mail, certified mail on this. My property is the L-shaped property that is surrounded by this, if you see where that triangle is, that's me, the big L, off of County Road 54. I don't think that's it. I can show you here. This is 54, this is me here.
Okay.
This apparent subdivision is going to wrap all the way around me. Now they're trying to change this line here. I knew nothing about the previous things here. Whenever Mr. Mike bought that 21 acres adjacent to me and he cleared it, he went to adding eight to 15 loads of red clay. Now my property's flooding. So I mean, what I'm concerned about is I know when a subdivision comes in, it's going to flow worse. There's already wetlands as well. We've got all kinds of habitats, all kinds of animals out there, so I don't know what this is about. Is this only about moving that line, or is this in rebuttal to them even building a subdivision? Because I was unaware of any prior meeting instituting a subdivision being built right there. I knew across the road on 54 there was, but I just want to know where we're at.
Yeah, the previously approved subdivision, with action on this case tonight, will nullify that previous subdivision from being constructed. So this will, this will take and basically just effectively move that line from the southern edge of that, I mean, on that map. Fabi, if you can bring it back up. It'll effectively move that line to the north and split those parcels there than, instead of them being split further south. It will not, like I said, it'll, it'll remove the ability of them to build that subdivision as a previously approved.
Okay, so there is no subdivision?
No, this is, this is a subdivision in terms of they're just subdividing the land, not a subdivision in terms of building, building new houses.
And if ever in the future there is plans to build, then I will receive notice again?
Yes, they would have to come back and start the whole process over.
Very good, thank you all very much.
No problem. Anyone else wish to speak?
All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Any other questions for staff? Entertain a motion if anybody is ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve case number SRP 25-14, subject to staff recommendations.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving SRP 25-14, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This case is approved. All right, thank you. Next case is CSP 25-18, the Mullick Cell Tower. I will open the public hearing and ask if staff has, anyone on the commission has had any prior communication on this case. I want to apologize to staff. I do not say that intentionally every time. I don't know why. I can't get that out of my head. All right, Ms. Rhodes?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is CSP 25-18, Mullick Cell Tower. The request is a 260-foot self-supporting telecommunications tower. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's in Planning District 14. The property is south of County Road 48 and east of Blueberry Lane in Silver Hill. The total acreage of the property is approximately 30 acres, however, the tower will encompass approximately 6,400 square foot of leasable area. Here's the locator and the site map. The property to the north is rural agricultural with an agricultural land use. To the south, we also see agricultural zoning, but with residential land use. To the east is base community zoning with a residential land use, and to the west, we have agricultural zoning with an agricultural land use. And here are the adjacent property images. In terms of the staff analysis and findings, the proposed cell tower does conform to the requirements of the ordinance. The future land use of the property includes rural, agricultural, low-impact development potential. We do see pockets of ideal conservation and conservation development material, potential. The development pattern of the area does reflect the flume. We see agricultural and residential land uses. The residential areas have single-family homes that are situated on large lots, and wireless telecommunications facilities are allowed within the current zoning district with commission site plan approval. And here is the site plan. And here is the site plan with an aerial overlay. Here are the details of the compound, as well as the tower elevation. And here is the future land use map outlining the different development potential areas, the grading and drainage plan. Here's the wetland delineation. The jurisdictional determination of the existing water body on the property must be provided by either a wetland professional for the natural resource planner to review, or we would need a second wetland delineation determining, or jurisdictional determination from the Corps, and this will need to be submitted before the CSP letter can be issued, and we will have this as a condition upon approval. And here is their landscape plan. Vertical bridge on behalf of the applicant is requesting a waiver from Section 13.9.2G4B, and this would eliminate a landscaped strip of four feet wide outside the perimeter of the compound, and they are stating that the visual impact of the tower would be minimal. So in terms of staff's recommendation, staff recommends approval with the following specific conditions. And the first one is the applicant is requesting a waiver from that particular landscape plan section. This would eliminate the landscaped strip of four feet wide outside of the perimeter of the compound. And then the second is for the applicant to clarify that the existing water body on the property is jurisdictional, and if so, we would need determination via a second wetland delineation for the natural resource planner to review, or for a jurisdictional determination from the Corps of Engineers. And then also, these general conditions will be attached to the approval recommendation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Cor, what's the process if the wetlands are found non-jurisdictional?
I would refer to Ashley on this one.
It's the conveyance there. The wetland delineator of record is from out of state, and they're just having some trouble with their determination, so as soon as they submit it, I'll review it, and if we agree with it, we'll move forward, or if we do not, we could require additional documentation from the Corps. But right now, we're just waiting on, they're supposed to send us something, we just didn't receive it in time.
Any other questions for staff? I have one person who's signed up to speak, Bob Chopra. You think you wish to, okay. Anybody else wish to speak on this case? Seeing no hands, I will close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, discussion on this case? We will entertain a motion if anybody is ready for one.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve case number CSP 25-18, subject to staff conditions.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Change me with the second. All those in favor of approval for CSP 25-18, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Our next case is CSP 25-24, Traveler's Food Mart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is case CSP 25-24, Traveler's Food Mart. The request is for a 4,905 square foot auto convenience store. Here's the location of the property within the county. It's located in Planning District 22. The property is south of US Highway 98 and east of County Road 95 in the Alberta community. The total acreage is three acres. Here's the locator and a site map. The property to the north is zoned B2 and currently vacant. To the south and east, we have RA zoning with agricultural and vacant land uses respectively. And then finally, to the west, we see B3, general business with a commercial land use. And here are the adjacent property images. In terms of the staff analysis and findings, the proposed site plan for the auto convenience market conforms to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The future land use of the property displays moderate development potential. This also includes neighborhood centers or nodes at key intersections, and this would allow for a variety of retail office and service uses to meet the needs of the community. At this intersection, we do see a neighborhood center node, and this supports the proposed use for the property. Here is the submitted site map, or site plan, excuse me, the grading plan, their erosion control plan, the future land use map, and right in the middle of the orange circle is the subject property, and it's located in a neighborhood-centered node, which would support local serving businesses such as a gas station. And here is the landscape plan. The applicant did receive a variance to reduce the southern landscape buffer width from 25 feet to seven and a half feet, and this is reflected on their plan. Staff's recommendation is approval with the conditions outlined on the screen, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff? I may not have done so, but I'm going to open up the public hearing, ask if anyone on the commission has had outside communication on this case. We have Jeffrey Keen signed up for this case to speak. Anyone else wish to speak on this case?
I had signed up. I don't have anything to add unless you have a question.
Are you the engineer or owner or?
Contractor.
Contractor? I do have a question, if you don't, if you don't mind coming up.
I noticed on the site plan, and we mentioned this in the work session, is your dumpster location, I guess being on that southwest corner of the building, I would have a little bit of concern with the drive-through being on that same alignment with the, with the dumpster, so I may want to explore an alternate location to place that.
Which way does that drive-through run? Is it running, exiting at the?
South to north, so.
Yeah.
The intention is for them to swing kind of along the detention pond and then come up the side of the building over there, so I guess that dotted line's a little misleading. It's not certainly necessary that, that people would align that, on that part of the building, but we're certainly open to shifting it around if, if need be.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So go back to the landscaping plan. Was it reduced?
Yes, sir. There was a reduction in the buffer width. There would need to be a 25-foot buffer here, but they requested a variance to eliminate it, but the Board of Adjustments allowed a seven and a half-foot buffer instead of 25.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments, discussion from the commission? We will entertain a motion if anyone is ready.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve case number CSP 25-24, subject to staff recommendations.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving CSP 25-24, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This case is approved. Our next case is CSP 25-27, Port City Glass Edition. I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone on the commission has had outside communications on this case. All right, Ms. McKenzie?
All right, this is CSP 25-27, Port City Glass Edition. They're requesting to add an additional 50 by 100 covered area towards the rear of the structure. This property is in Planning District 15. It's south of County Road 64 and east of Austin Road, and the Port City Glass original application did come before this board last year in August, and y'all approved it then. Here are the locator and site maps. Adjacent properties are zoned RA, RSFE, and B3, and B2, too. There's the site. Here are the adjacent properties. So this proposal is for a 50 by 100 covered porch addition to the Port City Glass facility, and it does conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. This property was approved for this commercial business and is still under construction, but this proposed addition should not have any effect on the use or surrounding areas. Staff believes this use is consistent with the community welfare and shouldn't detract from public's convenience at this location. Here is the site plan, and I kind of circled the area that they're adding on to, so that's the only addition to the property. Everything else is the same as what y'all approved last year. Feature land use map showing that this is a high city development potential area, and this is one of the zoning districts that is recommended for this land use. Here's the grading and drainage plan, erosion control, and then the landscape and parking. And staff is recommending approval with their general follow-up conditions.
Is the landscape plan the same one that was with the original approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's no modification to that needed.
Yeah, the only change was the covered part in the back, and then they had to add a few more parking spaces.
Any questions for staff? All right, I have David Schumer signed up to speak. Anything, okay. Anyone else here wish to speak on this case? All right, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Any additional questions, comments, discussion on this case? We will entertain a motion if anyone's ready.
I'll make a motion that we approve case number CSP 25-27, subject to staff recommendations.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of approval of CSP 25-27, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that case is approved, and that concludes our case section of the agenda. Next up is public comments. I believe I saw somebody had signed up to speak. Waiting on it to update.
Check him away.
Yes, sir. If you don't mind saying your name for us.
My name's Michael Ludvixson. I'm the current chairman for the Planning and Zoning Advisory Committee in Fort Morgan, which is District 25. I think you guys probably know better about that. Let me just start first by saying, and you probably don't hear it often enough, I really want to thank Jay and his entire staff. I've seen a lot of good progress in, in a lot of challenges that they've really had to overcome, and we appreciate all the work they're doing, and they tolerate me probably on a weekly basis, so I appreciate that as well. And they tolerate me probably on a weekly basis, so I appreciate that as well. Tonight, I come to you not with anything specific other than a request for maybe a review of the process. You had one item tonight that went without public hearing. Not any problem with not having a public hearing, but we are charged, we were configured and put in place by state legislature to review anything in the Fort Morgan area in regards to social, historical, ecological, public safety impacts. So we, as a group, because I've gotten a lot of phone calls about that one thing that you guys voted on, and I'm not here to discuss how it was voted on or anything else, but the process is that it would be looked at by staff and reviewed to see if we shouldn't receive that as one of the items that we should be reviewing if something like that comes up again. We've done a lot of setback reviews in the past. I think that this isn't really a highway construction setback that would, this is something that falls under subdivision regulation, so I'm just asking that we kind of, if we can review that, help me understand why we did not review that, and then in the future, if we can, make sure that we do get to review that. That's it. Thank y'all. Have a great evening.
Thank you very much. We also have Ahmad Attouk signed up for public comment. Yes, sir. And I apologize if I got that name wrong.
Me and my wife, we live abroad, but when we came back, we found out that I think the same company of Austin Road on 64, they've dumped some piles of soil on our land, and I think that's when they used to own the swimming pool. That's what I asked around, and that's what they told us. So I wanted you to know that we appreciate if somebody says something to them to pick up the stuff they dumped on our land and dispose of it in the appropriate manner. That's all.
Okay. Jay, I'm not sure what the process on that would be.
We can put a code complaint in the system, which will get our code compliance officers to go evaluate it, see, making sure they're either doing what they're supposed to do or correct what they're not supposed to be doing.
Yeah, we called the environment department because it has some fiberglass or asbestos, and then they said, you need, for the soil, you need to call somebody else.
Yeah, that would be our department. Our code enforcement team can do that.
I think Dave, he sends something, a letter in that regard.
Where's your property in?
It's Austin Road.
Okay. We'll...
It's the property behind whatever they're proposing to us, and that's...
Okay. Well, yeah.
That's the one to the east, I think.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, well, next on the agenda is Planning Commissioner comments. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? All right, we will take the Director's report.
Okay, well, I guess before I start the presentation, I can go ahead and kind of answer Mr. Ledvixson's question about the process. So there's two things at play there. The Ballin', I mean, the Fort Morgan Zoning Advisory Committee, their purview is pretty limited to what they see and recommend. So the law says that the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Advisory Committee shall be to make recommendations to Ballin County Planning and Zoning Commission concerning any proposed changes to zoning ordinances or regulations with master plan or variances there, too. So that's pretty specific about basically rezoning or changing the zoning ordinance or doing anything like that. It's what they have to see. The highway construction setbacks are a totally separate law, and this actually is very specific about, the state law is very specific about how they're handled. And, you know, what that law says, on such appeal, if you want to appeal the highway construction setback, the Ballin County Planning and Zoning Commission shall have authority to grant such relief. It may be appropriate to remedy the... So it's not a variance, it's an appeal to this other state law. So it's different than a zoning change or a zoning ordinance change or anything like that. This is an appeal to a separate law, so that's why it does not go into the purview of the Fort Morgan Advisory Committee. Just to be clear, and also, that law is specific, it's not, again, it's not a variance, it's an appeal to a different law, so there's no public hearing requirement or anything that happens with other variances. So just to be clear, that's why those are handled the way they're handled. They're a different law. But if anybody has any other questions about that, I'd be glad to answer that. So our monthly report, we talked about some of this stuff a little bit in the work session, but, you know, we go through our ongoing projects and the summary of the rezoning actions and permits issued and things like that. First one, some of our ongoing projects, you guys may have seen in the news, I guess earlier this week, the governor did announce the Gomesa funding allotments for this year. Ballin County did receive two. One was, the largest one was the Pretto Bay Boardwalk and ADA improvements. This is over in the Lillian area. We have a little bayfront part there that has an old access that really, the boardwalks need to be replaced and be made ADA compliant. So that's what that's about. The other one is also in the Lillian community, is, you know, doing some parking lot improvements there to the park with some stormwater, sustainable stormwater, and parking lot improvements. So really good to get some allotments of that funds. You know, those are sometimes hard to get, but I thought they're good. There's also some other really good projects the municipalities around the county received that were great projects for that program, so it's good to see those come in. We talked about this a little bit in the work session. I won't go into a ton of details right now, but just a little update on where we are in our master planning process. You know, we've had a few stakeholder meetings and got some impact, some input back, you know, kind of for some of the things that are trending and what we kind of need to pay attention to. But we are getting close to completing all our baseline data, which includes the population trends and projections, you know, housing elements, existing land uses, utility service areas, transportation, economic development and employment centers, natural resources and land currently in conservation, and then where all our community facilities are. So this is kind of the background information about what's going to guide the plan development. So we're getting close to having all that information together, and should have some more updates on that in the near future. Little summary of the rezoning actions from last month. There were only three on the county commission agenda. The first is the Roche property, which is down in the Point Clear area off of 32 and scenic 98. They rezoned it, downzoned it, it's currently zoned B2. They rezoned it to RSF2, which is consistent with the other homes next door. Those homes just to the west, they're actually zoned like RMF6 or some high-density thing, but this is a much lower density. The whole purpose was just to build a house on this lot, to take it out of commercial use and put it into residential use. The Goodrich property up in the kind of Spanish Fort area, they were trying to rezone it from RA to RSF3. After a lot of discussion, they ended up withdrawing that application. I don't think they felt comfortable with what the outcome was going to be, so we'll see if they want to come back. That was a big ask for, you know, jumping from RA to RSF3. That property also has some access issues. There's not a really good way of accessing that property, which was another factor in that, but... So anyway, they ended up withdrawing it to prevent a denial. The last one was the Armstrong property, RSF1 to B3. This is in the Fairhope area off of Twin Beach Road and Greeno Road. That highlighted a lot there. It's basically surrounded by commercial zoning. If anybody goes in that area much, that's kind of a commercial node at that intersection, so this is kind of properly zoning, a little isolated pocket there. So that's the only three they had at the county commission this month or last month. Some of our permits issued through August, if you guys remember, we're always kind of lag a month behind just to get all the data in from our system, but the number of preliminary plats, again, staying pretty consistent about the number of applications we're having. Same thing with final plats. Exemptions are, you know, staying pretty steady. There's always a lot of those. And PUDs are, you know, we're starting to see those, you know, increase a little bit with the different storage units that are now going through that process. But the interesting thing, and we talked about this a little bit in the work session, is you start seeing the number of lots that are actually in the preliminary plat, you know, so we're not seeing these, you know, massive developments like we were a few years ago. Now they're more kind of small, I wouldn't say small development, but smaller than the six and seven or eight subdivision that were coming in in '23. So the number of lots, even though our applications stay the same, the number of lots coming through preliminary plats is dropping. The final plat lots are continuing that trend up. You can see that's up to 948. That's obviously the lag time between all those plats that were approved in 2023. It always takes a couple of years to get those lots constructed into final plats, so you're, we're going to continue to see that trend lag behind all those preliminary plats that were approved in '23. So again, still healthy amount of applications, healthy amount of lots, but it is kind of becoming a more normalized trend instead of the spike we saw a couple of years ago, which is good. Number of subdivision exemption lots still staying, you know, pretty substantial, 435. You know, that's about on par with what we've seen the last couple of years. The number of PUD units also spiked in '23, but have dropped down to more manageable rates since then.
Hey, Jay, question on these numbers. So I understand the 2025 numbers being through August 31st. Are those total numbers for the previous years, or are they through that same point?
It's the same time period. It's January to August 31st of every year. So it's a direct comparison. That's right, yeah. Rezonings, and we've kind of talked about this every month, you know, we have seen an increase in rezonings. A lot of that, you notice where they're coming from, they're in some of the newly zoned districts. A good piece of it is kind of corrective zonings, but, you know, we are seeing a trend of increase on that. PRDs are still, you know, they're still few and far between. We have had a couple this year. The zoning variances are continuing to trend down, which is a good indication of our, you know, the clarity we created with our ordinances to not have to get so many different variances because they should be kind of difficult to get. Commercial site plans, they're still lagging behind a little bit, but they are starting to tick back up. You know, I think we had, what, three or four tonight, whatever it was, so we're starting to see a few more of those. And that's also a pretty consistent trend. Usually your commercial sites lag behind your residential development a little bit, so, you know, I think there's a little bit of reaction from the 2023 purge, but... So anyway, that's kind of where we are with our permits. Again, still busy, still a lot of permits coming in, but I will say it does, it feels and the data's kind of backing up that it's really much a more kind of level and sustainable, you know, development pattern happening right now. Interagency coordination, we have a few things going on. The county commission did approve an updated letter of support for the Fort Morgan Muggle Bay shoreline study. They've been working on that for a couple of years in a couple of different phases, so we're continuing to, you know, we don't really have any role in that other than providing USAC our support, but I think it's a great study they're doing. We do have our, with our municipalities, our 30-Q program, and, you know, you've probably seen a lot of this in the news and the county commission stuff. Frank and Mark have done a good job putting together with the cities different programs. A kind of a list, I don't have any of the details all the way in here, but the list that we've done so far is City of Gulf Shores has some County Road 6 and Highway 59 improvements. City of Foley has some James Road extension improvements, so that's kind of creating a parallel route on the east side of town in between Foley and Gulf Shores. Town of Magnolia Springs has this great project on Magnolia Springs Highway there, through the heart of town. City of Spanish Fort has some connectivity they're correcting up there on Old Highway 31 and, you know, kind of where there's sportsplex and different things are happening in that area. And City of Bayonet was the most recent with the Red Hill Road and Clark Avenue improvements there by the middle school and high school. So it's great, it's great to show that, you know, how well the county and the cities are working together right now. The final thing, we did also have a little small thing with the nature conservancy, we're going to put some different educational and awareness signs at the boat ramps. You know, it's kind of a good, you know, informational signage program they have going, so the county commission did approve that. But other than that, that's kind of where what we've been busy on, so we'd like to answer any questions.
I don't have a question. I had a comment. I watched the commissioners' meeting when they did the last rezonings, and the staff reports aren't recommending approval or denial on it. They're stating the facts, and the facts support either one way or the other. And I think that, I like that a lot better, and I think that they made some really good decisions.
Yeah, so we're, that was one of the changes. So obviously, as we're, as we're kind of implementing a lot of the regulation changes that have happened over the last several months, one of the things we realize is how we're reporting things, rezoning cases when they're going to county commission. You know, our job as staff, just like we do here, is we're here, you know, we don't have a biased opinion one way or another, you know. We look at the facts. Like I always say, we call balls and strikes. Like, so, you know, we look at our regulations. This is what you have to do, either meets it or doesn't, or it complies or doesn't comply. And so we're looking at how we report zonings, rezonings to county commission to not have some implied, you know, approve or deny going into it. Just, we want to just stick to the facts and just say, hey, we did our evaluation, we did our smart card, a smart growth tool evaluation, and it either, you know, is supported by the regulations or it's not supported. We're not saying that we're not telling you to approve it or deny it, we're just saying, we're just presenting the facts. It is consistent or it's inconsistent. And I think it's, you know, it's a good way of taking a lot of the biasness out of how it's presented. You know, we can just present the facts, and then the elected bodies can make their decision, you know, as, with those facts at hand, so.
Knowing so much more than they do, probably all the time, would you feel comfortable offering your, an approval or denial, your opinion of an approval or denial if they asked you?
Well, again, yeah, so at our, at staff level, you know, we, what we have to do is we have to kind of put our personal feelings and our, you know, emotions or whatever to aside. So we, like I say, we're just looking at the rulebook and saying it meets the rules or doesn't. So I really try to not say that, but I could say, if I were asked that, I would, I would say, well, here would be my concerns, you know, and just kind of give my, some of the things that were either, or here would be my reasons why I think this makes sense, you know, and kind of give some more color to what the, how it either complies or doesn't comply. But I would really strongly hesitate saying, no, you should approve or deny. I mean, I've never tried to ever say that. I would, you know, even, you know, when we have discussions about it, it is really more fact-based and not saying, hey, you need to approve it and you need to deny this. It is, you know, more like, well, here's what, here's what we're seeing, and here's what would be some of our reasons why we think it's supported, or here's some of our reasons why, you know, why we would have some concerns about it. But I really always try to stay away from, you know, any kind of hard approval or denial, you know, conversation. Because that's just not, that's just not a role. It doesn't matter, you know, what, you know, what my personal feeling is. I'm not the elected person, so, you know, my job is to make sure we're following the rules, so.
I think that's much better when we, you know, something would be recommended for approval or denial, and then if we went the opposite way, it, I would say it seemed that there's no congruency, you know. It's, you know, like you say, leave it up to the powers that be, hear the facts, and that's, I think that's much better. Some things are written more cut and dry, but when you get into the things that are and have some gray to them...
And those gray area ones...
And there's no slant to it.
Right, those gray area ones were the reason why we did that. We've had a few down around the Alberta area, around Stucky Road, there's been some down there, there's been some kind of out towards Barnwell area that it's really a coin toss. It's like, well, it meets some of the things, but it doesn't meet other things, so, like, what are we going to do? We're going to, we're going to have to call heads or tails, right? So instead of trying to do that, let's just say, hey, well, here's where it meets, here's where it doesn't meet, and the smart growth scorecard that we use that aligns with our regulations kind of gives them a little bit of guidance, well, it either strongly supports, it somewhat supports, it somewhat doesn't support, or it strongly doesn't support. So it's like, it gets a little bit more... So it's like, it gives a little bit more color to what we're trying to portray.
It lets what you're, when the public brings what they bring, it leaves more weight in the balance for what our people bring forward.
Right. Because that's what it just, it seemed like, even though it was not intentional by anybody, it seemed like we were creating a preset condition of whether it should be approved or denied, and that's not what we're here to do. We're here just to tell you whether it complies or doesn't comply.
Is it scaled at all? I mean, that's the thing. You're not approving or denying it, but it meets everything. What is borderline approval?
Yeah.
Hey, look, y'all really need to read this one, study this one.
Yeah, so we actually put the Smart Growth Scorecard in there, and when we write out our evaluation, it set, like when I said, when it says, like if it strongly supports, like, hey, man, this really makes sense. There's not a whole lot of unmet factors here. If it somewhat supports, and you kind of read into that, you're like, well, some of those things, it was kind of there, but not fully there. It was more on that line. So you can kind of, you can read through the staff report and understand how, how much, where it was on that scale as far as was it really, did it really mean everything? Or was it somewhere on the 50/50 line? So you could definitely read through that in the staff report and understand.
It would take a lot longer for me to go through if I wasn't already seeing an approval or denial or something like that. If it meet everything, but I don't know.
And the subdivision stuff, it is a little bit more cut and dry because the state law is really specific about how we have to handle these kind of things, right? So we can kind of continue on that path with these, right? But zoning, zoning is very subjective. There's a lot of different factors in that that can sway things. So from a zoning perspective, it's kind of more of, more of an art than a technical. It's like understanding, like, how does this really fit? How does it make sense? Like, how well, or does it sort of fit, or does it really fit? That's kind of where we try to give them a little bit of a scale of how well it aligns with the ordinances. But it does seem to help smooth things out. I think it's, we've only done it for the last maybe two meetings or something like that, but we're trying it out, and so far, it seems to be pretty well-received. And I would say, I wish I was the person that invented that, but there are other counties in the southeast that do that. That's not, I'm not a novel person to figure that out.
Thank you, Jay. Anything else from staff? Well, we will stand adjourned until our November 6th meeting.